With liberty and justice for all. Would you all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces who fight for our freedom each and every day and those have lost their lives in doing so? Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting of Monday, November 9th, 2015. We will begin with to set the dates for the December 2015 meeting. The organizational meeting and board meeting will both be on December 7th. The organization meeting will start at 7:00 PM and the board meeting at 7:30 PM. We will go to a little out of order tonight. Chief Clark Osborne has his Dare Hockey Tournament tonight, so we're going to get him on and off so he can get back to tend to the children.
Thank you.
Chief Osborne.
Mayor and Board, thank you very much. Before I start, Joe and Trish, I want to wish you guys the best of luck and thank you for your years on the board and service to our department. I appreciate both of you, thank you very much. And I want to wish our new board, Ed Frank and I know more, I don't know if she's here, but I know more as well, I know her for years, the Middle League, the best as well, as well as Bob with our board coming on. And I want to thank you for your support and whatever I can do to help out, I'll always be here for you guys. We have Dare Hockey Playoffs going on, there's a lot of kids and a lot of parents at the rink up until 10 o'clock tonight, so I want to thank you guys for accommodating me. And I apologize in a dress, but I'm going to be refereeing the next game, so I do appreciate it. I have two quick things. Number one is to accept the resignation of Glenn Edmonds as a part-time police radio dispatcher. Glenn has been with us for the past two or three years. He just resigned, he's an retired police officer and he just, at this time, decided to retire from law enforcement totally, so we're asking the board to accept his resignation at this time.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Board. And second, I ask you to appoint Abigail Adams as a part-time police radio dispatcher. She will be replacing Glenn Edmonds. She's interned with us, she's just about finished with her master's degree, lives here in Suffolk, has done a great job for us interning, has been really volunteering for us about a year. And it also helps to have another female dispatcher because they also serve as matrons, we have female prisoners which we do get, they also serve as matron duty, on matron duty as well, which saves us overtime from calling a female officer in to handle that duty. So ask the board to, if they can hire her.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
And I want to thank you guys, Wednesday night, we will have the championship games at 7:00 and 8:00, we were going to do it tomorrow night, but it looks like the weather's a little shaky, so please, if you're ready, come up, we have a very big crowd expected at the Dare Rink, just like tonight. And I want to thank you once again, Joe and Trish, best of luck, and Ed Frank Mora, Bob, best of luck to the new board, look forward to working with you. And thanks again for everything. I'll be heading back to the rink, I have my cellphone available, if needed, please call me, I will be up there the rest of the night till about 10 o'clock.
Before you run away, Chief, would you like to give the Tory Drive a plug, please?
I'm sorry.
The Tory Drive, would you like to give it a plug?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much, I meant to do that, yes, we are, we just are starting our 25th annual Tory Drive, we've been doing this since, I got hired in January 2nd, 1991, and first year I started it, I started the Tory Drive with Lou Ventrini and John De Roma. 25 years later, it's going bigger and stronger than ever, already getting calls, we already did a lot of organization today, and thanks to Kathy, and she's a community center, and she'll explain, because part of that this year will be the Christmas Parade, which we've been working diligently on, we're having for the last two days on the phone dealing with some of the calls we're getting, which is going very well, so we are, that's part of it also, but thank you, yes, the Tory Drive is underway officially as of Monday, you will see, we probably have about 200 signs in the village, I received notices from residents that are asking for signs, so I want to thank all of you for that, and thank you for the reminder.
Okay, and last but not least, Clark, I want to thank you for being such an amazing chief and doubly an amazing person. And they always say that a leader is only as good as the men and women she has behind her, and you made me a rock star, and I really appreciate absolutely everything that you do for this village. You are the true example of what a chief of police and a gentleman are, and I just want to thank you for all that you do for this village.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you very much, but I appreciate that from you very much. And I thank everybody for the support of our department, thank you, Mayor, totally appreciate it, and I'll be up to street if you need me, please call me if any questions come up.
We're calling you.
Please do, I'll be up there, okay.
Thank you.
We might just call you because we can.
Just to talk.
Okay, next up, we have our fire department, Chief John Salmon.
Good evening. First, I just want to start off saying to Trish and Joe, you know, I wasn't in that long as chief, but I really want to appreciate all the work and support you gave the fire department. And Mr. Markounis, good luck to you with becoming mayor. Also, I just want to thank you guys for the support, the new rescue just came in last week and looks great, the guys tonight are actually training on it, hopefully it's going to be in service within a week or two, so it's down at the Hook and Ladder Company, so if anybody didn't see it yet, stop on by, but thank you very much for all the support, so, thank you.
Again, John, I want to thank you for doing such a wonderful job with the fire department. Chief is just a step for you, you've been in the fire department how many years?
Twenty-five.
And I remember your first year, so thank you for all of your service and everything that you do for this village, and it's been an honor to work with you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have an award. So, since this will be the last Andrew Hagerty Award that I will be giving out, I thought a lot about it, and I thought a lot about the recipient of it, and I wanted that person to really reflect the true values and the goodness of Andy Hagerty. He loved this village with all his heart, he served with honor, and I personally miss him so very, very much. But the one thing that I always learned from Andy was that community service, serving on the board, was an honor, and he did it with such grace. So I wanted this to kind of reflect that person, and I picked a person who probably everyone knows, but you don't hear much from him, but he does so much behind the scenes and never looks for that pat on the back. He's kind, he's generous, he volunteers his time with the Lions Club, he volunteers his time on our sewer grievance committee, which is not an easy task, and he's just such a fine gentleman, much like what Andy Hagerty is and was. So for that, and for your service to this community, and for being such a wonderful man, and taking your seat at each and every village board meeting, and being concerned about what goes on in our village, being that concerned citizen, and all of your community service, it's my honor to present the Andrew C. Hagerty Outstanding Service Award to Dr. Stanley Lushen.
I do, Mayor.
We want to make conversation.
And we also have, you're going to take Ruthie out to Marcello's for a little something.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Oh, you'll go by yourself.
Dr. Lushen speaking to the mic, please.
Is that the microphone here? Okay. All right, well, yes, thank you, I've been on that board, Joe Savory's appointed me, I remember 30 years ago, or whatever it was.
Probably.
Yeah, he said, "Do me a favor," because the sewer plant had to be funded by the, was funded by the federal government, and they couldn't put it in a tax roll, so they had to have a separate account, said, "Do me, we need a grievance committee, where appeals, do me a favor, do that for this year," and how many years ago? And I'm still doing it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And I got to tell, yeah, I remember before you were village clerk, who was it, George Cox?
George Cox.
Okay, I remember, I go back that far. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, it is 7:40, so we will start our first public hearing on the rental properties. Terry?
The proposed local law requires a rental permit for non-owner occupied residences, dwelling units, it requires an application, it requires an inspection by the building department for anyone who wants a permit, certainly given the requirements of the Constitution, the owner of property can say no, but then the rental permit is obviously at risk. So it's intended to ensure that the various properties that are rented are safe and that they're habitable, and this puts additional controls at the hands of the building department.
Okay, would anyone like to speak from the public? Okay, would anyone like to ask any questions or speak on the board? Okay, if not, oh, I'm sorry.
It was updated, right, from the last time?
Yes, I emailed.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to say.
Yes. Okay, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Do I have a motion to amend the rental properties' local law?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, Culture and Recreation, Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. I'd like to also start out by saying, Mayor, good luck with you, and thank you very much for everything, it's been a privilege working with you. And Joe, to you also, it's been a privilege and good luck to you. To the new board, I wish you luck, and I look forward to working with you in the next couple of years.
Kath, just move that microphone a little bit, we can't hear you.
Yeah, it's hard, I can't tell if I.
Turn it, turn it to your right a little bit. Okay, now, Chuck, can you hear me? Yeah, better.
Okay, a few things that we have coming up, we've got the Veterans Day Parade this Wednesday, November 11th, and that will be at 11 o'clock. Lineup is starting here at Village Hall, and then the parade at 10:30, and the ceremony will begin at 11 o'clock, so everyone is welcome to come to that. We have our next Dare Dance on November 13th, which is this Friday, at the community center at 7 o'clock till 9 o'clock. We have our first lead event for this year, it will be on November 20th, so that's next Friday night, and that's at 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM, that's the Seeschool Lead Group. We've got, as Chief Osborne had said, the Christmas Parade is coming up, that will be on Saturday, December 5th, and the kickoff is at 6 o'clock. We will also.
Oh, Kath, just on that, I have the information for you, I'll give it to you tomorrow on the horses.
Thank you, okay, that'd be great. We have a special showing, the Lafayette Theater is going to have the Polar Express, which will be free to the public, so we're hoping that people will come down to the village, see that, and then stay for the parade. We have the Pearl Harbor Ceremony, which is always a very moving ceremony, and that will be on Sunday, December 6th. Thank you, Frank, for finding us a speaker for that, I appreciate it, he did reach out to us, so we talked with him. That's at 2 o'clock here in Village Hall. We have, for everyone that hasn't heard yet, we have Elf coming up at Madison Square Garden, tickets have been sold out for that, and again, that's one of those trips that we take, that the amount of money that we get in for the tickets goes right back into it, so it doesn't cost the village anything to put on that, to go to that show. The last item that I have this evening is the Youth Bureau, for those of you that know, we had one summer helper this summer from the Youth Bureau, she was a great addition, she helped at all the departments, she met with all the personnel in the village, she did paperwork for us, she helped out a lot, and we went into that knowing that it would be 100% reimbursement, so if we can sign the contract to get that back to the county, we can get reimbursed for her for this summer. So it was a great program, we liked doing for them, it's a great fit, so if we can do that, then we'll get our reimbursement for Michael to process, so I think that's it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, and again, good luck, Trish, good luck.
Thank you, Kathy, again, you know, I just want to say that you and I came a long way, and, you know, you came into this job on the first day, and it was such an enormous undertaking, and you shined beautifully, and you just do such a phenomenal job with the recreation here in this village, and we're so very, very lucky to have such an outstanding program, so thank you for all that you do, above and beyond, above and beyond.
Thank you, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, what times did movies start? Polar Express?
The Polar Express is at 3 o'clock.
Three?
So that will go to about 5, so hopefully we'll get a lot of people in the village early, get to visit the shops and everything, and then the parade will be at that, so 3 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, the grant writer, Fred Vella, is unable to be with us tonight, but I would like to report that Fred has been working for quite a few years, along with Joe Corrigan, on the Community Development Block Grant-funded program, and in, God, her name just went out of my head.
Corinne Cox.
Corinne, and Corinne, who've all done such an outstanding job, and we need to be audited for that program, and I am very, very proud to say that we got an outstanding report from the CBDG, they said, "The Village of Suffolk has done an excellent job managing the program funds of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development from Rockland County." So I just want to thank all of you and Fred for doing such an outstanding job, and we do have such a wonderful reputation with the CBDG because of you guys, so thank you for all of that. Building Department, Steve is unable to be with us tonight, I will give you a report, number of building permits issued were 18, number of municipal violation searches were eight, number of fire inspections were 25, number of fire violations issued were nine, number of orders to remedy issued 19, and number of appearance tickets issued were six, and there was $6,120 collected from the building department, from those items. Village Attorney?
Thank you. At the last meeting, we brought up the Tech Spectrum contract for our computer IT people, Mike had some issues with some of the work that had to be done, and I understand that you're satisfied with, after you've discussed it with them, so, and we had renewed it for 30 days at the last meeting, so if you want to proceed, you need to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, it's a one-year contract, but it has a 30-day cancellation clause, it's $2,850 per month, and they have in the provisions that we wanted such that, so that the time from one month carries over to the following months.
That's for the support?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan? Yep, and I vote yes, motion is carried.
That's all.
Thank you, Terry.
That's for the mayor to sign the contract.
Yes.
Yes.
Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki.
I too would like to offer the best of luck to Trish and Joe, it was a great pleasure working with both of you through these years.
It's been one heck of a ride, dude.
Yeah, a long time.
How many storms?
Yeah.
Okay, during the workshop meeting, I distributed a table of organization, we had some discussion on filling a vacant position, and the vacant position currently is in the refuse department, we had an MEO-2 retire in July, and we have monies budgeted to hire a replacement, that replacement would be a laborer and not an MEO-2. So I am requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Gabriel Vasquez to a vacant laborer's position within the refuse department. Mr. Vasquez has been approved by Rockland County personnel, is a Suffolk resident, and has a CDL driver's license. The pay rate for this position is $16.68, with a starting date of November 23rd, 2015.
Okay, I will appoint Mr. Vasquez, do I have a motion to confirm?
Confirm.
Do I have a second?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What do I want to do here, 8 o'clock, what time is it? No, it's too early. Okay, audience participation, if you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Ask her to speak into the mic.
Yeah, please make sure you speak into the microphone, so our recorder is able to pick your voice up.
That's good.
Very good.
James Lyons, 29 Temple Lane, I too would like to wish you and the you two ladies the best of luck in your future endeavors, you've done a lot for this village, and I would like to congratulate you, Ed, and your running mates for the election last week. Having said that, I come to the board meetings every month, and every month, Mr. Sawicki gets up and asks for a replacement for somebody in the DPW, and every month, you guys vote no, or don't vote at all, so it doesn't get done. Now, it's my understanding that these positions are in the budget, and part of my tax increase, and everybody's tax increase, was to pay for that budget. So my question to you is, do you plan to spend that money that you took from us, or should I expect a refund check anytime soon? I'm asking you because you've been controlling the board for the last year.
Oh, you're asking me, no, that's okay. No, that's fine. As you know, and you are aware of that, Mr. Sawicki has not given us the table of organization which he gave us last.
Excuse me?
That is not true.
That is not true?
I'm not finished, I'm sorry.
You said he did not give it to us, he did.
Until last week, that's what I went to say, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
And now, upon review of the table of organization, which I need to further review with Mr. Sawicki, is that personnel were left off of the table of organization. So we will be meeting with Mr. Sawicki this week.
Okay, but every month, he's asking for a replacement, you approve the positions in the budget.
We will.
So why are you not allowing him to fill the positions?
We will review it this week with Mr. Sawicki.
Okay, so for the past year, you, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll expect my check.
Would anyone else like to speak? Sure, come on up.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay. Joe Maraglino, 65 Wayne Avenue, I have a few things to discuss, starting off with EP Dascal Corp.
I'm sorry.
The EP Dascal Corp. on Washington Avenue and on the corner of, I forgot the other street, forgive me. Anyway, a few years ago, they fought like heck to go and build 40 condominiums, a still vacant lot, I just wanted to know if the board knew if they have any intentions on building this condominium complex anytime soon, I didn't know if anybody heard about it, you know.
Yeah, I do believe that they have gone to the planning board, or at least applied for permits, so I do believe that that's going to be something that's going to be going forward.
Yeah, I understand he got approval for everything, but it seems like this guy just, you know, oh, he fought like heck and then nothing happened.
Yeah, he hasn't come before the board yet, he's only gone before them, so we haven't really gotten anything on it yet, but I'm sure that the board, you know, once they get it from the planning board, and it comes back to them, they'll be able to discuss it further with you, but at this point in time, I believe he looked for his approvals.
Okay, yeah, I can kind of look at it, because I live on Wayne Avenue, I look at everything as a quality of life standpoint, and anything that betters the way that area, the north side of this village, it would help us.
Absolutely.
Okay, second question, they just built a nice building on Lafayette Avenue, and the municipal parking lot back there is hurting pretty bad, was it important a deal for them to repave the parking lot?
Yeah, they're not really done with their construction yet, so it seemed to us to, it would be silly to do anything in that lot until they're absolutely completely done back there.
Yeah, I understand, yes.
So, once the building is actually completed, I think that that will be when that will be addressed.
Okay, yeah, I was about to say, I parked there an awful lot.
Yeah, no, it's in bad shape, I know.
It's pretty bad.
It is very bad.
Okay, I haven't been at a lot of village planning board meetings since June, but I go online and I've been listening to an Orange Avenue project that took place as far as the sidewalk issue, and you got money allocated to fix the sidewalks on Orange Avenue, which is fine, but I, like I said, I live on Wayne Avenue, and back in June, I came here and addressed a lot of situations as far as the problems on Wayne Avenue, sidebar, on the north side of the street are a priority, you see them, okay, they're in really bad shape. It kind of confused me by watching this, that the money would be, with all due respect to the residents of Orange Avenue, I, like Mr. Morris said, he walked up and down Orange Avenue to, you know, take a look at how bad it was. Wayne Avenue by far is much worse than Orange Avenue sidewalks will ever be, okay? And the other thing is, on Orange Avenue, is, I'm sorry, forgive me, it's one of the worst paved jobs I've ever seen on Orange Avenue.
Let me explain, let me explain.
Go ahead, please, yeah.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, that's not, that's not the paving job that is going to be done in milling and paving. What they did was they sent that project, it's not our road, obviously, you know that, right?
Yeah, it's a state road.
Right, so they went out to bid on the paving on that, and they did not get any bids back. So they had to put it out to rebid it, so in the meantime, because they won't be able to now do the project until the spring, they decided to put like a winter coat on it, so it's just something to hold it through the winter, and then when the spring comes, they'll rebid it and then do the milling and paving on it.
Yeah, I thought.
I know.
I said, if we haven't wintered like the past two, it's not going to last.
I've gotten so many phone calls, and I'm like, who did that job?
Yeah, it's popular now than it was with the potholes, you know, so.
Yeah, the county was nice enough, actually Jonathan DeGraw, who actually has a very big love for our village, had them do just the winter coat, so it wasn't, I mean, it's better than it was, it's not great, it's not, but at least it's not what it was, and it'll be okay for the winter.
Right, I seen, like, they seem to do like three-quarters of it from the Mawa border up, I'm like, what's this about?
And they were only going to do half, and Jonathan got them to do the whole thing for us, so, yeah, we were lucky in that respect, at least, there's not these diving holes, they're just kind of.
Yeah.
Ripples. Yeah, ripples in the road, if you're not drunk, you think you will be.
It's like being on a little boat ride, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, also, back in, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, back in June, I addressed you about, again, Wayne Avenue, I know a lot of what I discussed with you guys, I gave you pictures, about what can possibly help us, whether it be crosswalks without the signage, we don't need flashing lights, it's not Broadway, it's not Queens Boulevard, I understand, we were looking for some crosswalks to cross safely, some signage, again, this is all DOT stuff, and I understand that, some signage and possibly a speed limit sign that could possibly write up, light up, if they do go over the 30 mile an hour speed limit area. Also, when you're coming westbound on Wayne Avenue, you go underneath that driveway overpass, there's two lanes, and believe me, Trish, they're flying under there.
I know.
They're flying. I'm not saying post a cop there, blah, 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 I mean, we're just trying to make it a little bit safer.
Yeah, we try to put the speed trailer down there as much as possible to kind of deter that, and it does help, but when you don't have it there for a little while, then people forget, and they start speeding through there again, but I do agree with you, you know, the problem, like you said, with the, I mean, we're having the worst time just trying to get them to pave the road.
Yeah.
You know, to get signs out of them and all of that stuff would mean a traffic study, and so, but, you know, obviously, Ed, put that on your radar.
It's right on my list.
After, after the road gets paved, you know, to see what they can do with that area.
Okay, yeah, because, again, I understand they dug it up for gas main, I understand, there can't be nothing done now.
You can't ask for too much at one time, so.
No, I know that.
And the road is like the important thing, so that's what we're concentrating on now.
It's pretty much a priority, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, I just don't want to see anybody get hurt anymore or killed on Wayne Avenue, back in May, we had a fatality, unfortunately, on Wayne Avenue. We're trying to watch out for our neighbors. I see people crossing the street into areas that there is no sidewalk whatsoever, and you know that.
Absolutely.
Other sidewalk areas that are just atrocious, I mean, it looks like the grass is growing. I helped out the DPW, I'm a good neighbor, I help out the DPW, I'm constantly picking up litter on Wayne Avenue, I'm, I went across the street where that wing wall is, weeds are four feet high, I cut it down myself, I took a broom, and I tried to help out a little bit, because I know these guys are understaffed, and they should have another person helping them out.
Thank you.
Anybody, but, you know, if we all kind of pitch in a little bit, and I'm willing to help out, because it's a very busy, messy street. We want to welcome people into our village. We want to say, hey, welcomes. I love Suffolk. Right here, there's a sign that says, "Working to rebuild Suffolk. Let's get it done." Let's help people out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, as long as, he's talk, Carol Verano, Suffolk, New York. As long as we're talking about sidewalks, Boulevard really needs them from one lane to the other. People walk down there to go shopping, to catch the bus, the train, and it's kind of hit and miss, one side, then the other side. By the bridge, you've got sidewalk on a bridge, but no sidewalk leading to it on the south side. Could we look into that?
I will, I will pass that along, Mr. Sawicki.
Okay.
And we will, we'll look into it. Thanks, Carol. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, we will move on. Time is, okay, we will move to the next public hearing, which is amending Resolution 2015-12, which authorized the sale and discontinuance of 2,399 square feet portion of Chestnut Street, A.K., also known as Blauvelt Place. And Rob Magrino, our Assistant Village Attorney, is handling this portion of this property. So we're going to look to Rob to fill us in.
Thank you, Mayor. This was noticed, is mentioner, right? We had a public hearing, the appropriate notice. Yeah, the reason this is on, as you know, this project has been going on for some time. We're about ready to close. The title company had an issue with the wording of the resolution with respect to that portion of Chestnut Street. One of the, first, we need a separate public hearing, which this is, which we didn't have the last time. And secondly, we needed a factual determination that that portion of the road is no longer needed for village purposes. So I believe there was testimony to that the last time. But I did speak to Mr. Sawicki today. He reviewed the map and the description. I guess just for confirmation purposes, did you have any issue with respect to that portion of Chestnut Street, also known as Blauvelt Place?
Well, I did speak to Brooker Engineering this afternoon, and they described that lane width to be 14 feet, and that's acceptable.
Okay. So, you know, for those purposes, I asked the board to consider that, that 2,399 square feet of Chestnut Street, as described in the resolution and shown on the map, is no longer needed by the village for village purposes, and it can be sold pursuant to the Resolution 2015-12, and that we amend the resolution by the resolution that I provided to you earlier today.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak from the public? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. And then, just one more thing on the Orange Avenue project.
Hold on, I got to do the, I got to do the vote on that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Do I have a motion amending Resolution 2015-12?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
I'm sorry. Ready? And now, just to add, another Resolution 2015 of 11, dealt with the pilot and the host community benefit agreement. I've been speaking with the lawyers for Orange Avenue many times. We're trying to put this to bed. We're hopeful of a closing this month. The resolution, condition number seven of the pilot, was that it closed by July 15th. Obviously, that date has come and gone, and I'm just asking the board, I submitted a proposed resolution to the board, just to extend that one date instead of July 15th to make it December 31st, 2015.
Sir? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Magrino.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. It was a pleasure working with you and-
Same here. And thank you, Joe, and congratulations to the others.
Thank you. Okay. Village Clerk.
First thing I have is the approval at the board meeting of October the 5th, 2015.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Just a reminder that the water bills were sent out at the end of the month, and if you didn't receive your water bill, just call the office. Happy to get your coffee.
That's the first thing everybody's going to do when they go home.
We're returning, we're unpaid village taxes to the county, which we do each year, and a new authorization for the mayor and trustees to sign it. And the amount of taxes to be collected is $246,357.57.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
That's it.
Thank you. Finance Department.
I'll add my comments with the rest. Mayor and trustee Corrigan, it's been a pleasure working with both of you, and wish you the best of luck going forward as well to Mayor-elect Markounis. And the other trustees, it's been a pleasure working with you as well, and looking forward to working with you and trustee Hertzman. Anyhow, the big event that we had this week was the sale of some notes and bonds, and we received some excellent rates on those. The bonds, which are 20-year bonds predominantly for sewer projects, is a 3.8% rate that we received, total interest cost. And the net interest cost on the notes, which are good for a year for various purposes, came in at 1.98%. So that was actually a very good result given today's climate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Trustees. Nothing? Okay, I have a few items. The first item is, I'd like to set a public hearing for two 15-minute parking spaces in front of 76 Lafayette Avenue. This is near the new Ufgang-Brooker building. We, Ari Ufgang, who is, partners with Brian Brooker in this amazingly beautiful building that they just put up on Orange Avenue, is having a very exciting new tenant come into the Village of Suffolk, and I'm very, very happy to have him here and his cousin. And they are opening up a, the Bada Sushi, which I think some of you are familiar with in Irmont. They are bringing one down here into the Village of Suffolk. So we're very excited to have you. And they had, they have a lot of takeout business. So they thought about, in, not only in regards to his own business, but into, with regards to the Chinese restaurant, the Dunkin' Donuts, which are all in-and-out type of businesses, that it would make sense to have two 15-minute parking spots. So I went down to look at the area, and Chief Clark Osborne had also looked at the area, and it really truly does make a lot of sense. So these businesses can keep, keep things moving, and we have a couple of spots for people who just run in for a takeout or run in for a cup of coffee. So it seems like a very good area for these spots. So I asked the board to set a public hearing so that we may hear from the public on this, and I really, really strongly hope that we do, do this. I think it would be really helpful to the downtown businesses in this area, and I so look forward to our new business coming in. So do I have a motion to set up public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It would be Decem, oh, right, December 7th. December 7th.
December 7.
7:40. Okay, who motioned?
Motion. 7:40, December 7th.
7:40. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. So, Ari, that'll be a 7:40 on December 7th. They'll have the public hearing on it. So if you guys want to come and speak at it, that, that's a great time. All right? Thank you. Lots of luck to you. Okay. The next item I have is the appointments of the tree advisory board members of Fred Rela and Charles Barone. I would like to, I don't, I guess the, the tree committee must have started in November. And to make it, simplify it a little bit, I think that we should have those appointments in December, as all the other appointments are. So I'd like to ask the board to approve tonight to hold Fred Rela and Charles Barone until the December meeting and allow them to continue on to the board until the December meeting, till the new appointments.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So they will be on the list of appointments for the December meeting. I do have one more thing. I had a request from Jennifer O'Lyon, is the head coach of the Suffolk Varsity Cheerleading Team. And she's trying to do a fundraiser. It's going to be a clothing drive fundraiser. I'm assuming that it works the same as kind of the Dare clothing drops and all the other different organizations. And she's looking for a Saturday in either November or December for a drop-off point in the village. So I'd like to ask the board to allow Kathy Mills to work with her in trying to find a appropriate drop-off point so that they can have these clothes collected, and they could raise some money for the, the cheerleading team.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, Kathy, I'm going to hand this over to you. And if you'll just get in touch with her, whenever, yeah, you use the app from Virginia. Right. If you guys get, get in touch with her, that would be great. Okay, I think that's all that I have. Since this is my last board meeting, I wanted to say a few words. And I want to tell you that I leave this, this post as mayor, I don't leave this village. I love my village. I have so, so, so fortunate to serve this village for 10 years on this board, and it was the best 10 years of my life. And it's because of the people that work here. I have never seen such an amazing, dedicated bunch of people than we have in this village. Our DPW is the finest DPW because of the people who work there, because of the men that come to work each and every day, and they come here not because it just pays the bills, but because they love this village. And although they have given a lot of challenges over this past year, working short-staffed, some, some uncomfortable working conditions, I'll leave it at that, they rose to the occasion, and they made sure that this village was taken care of, and not on village time, but on their own time. And I commend each and every one of those men down there. And, you know, my two years here as the mayor of this village, we've become a family. And I, I believe in that. I believe that, like I said to Clark, you're only as good as the men and women behind you. Well, let me just tell you something. The employees of this village are just outstanding. From Virginia mentioner, who has been here longer than any of us could ever stay in one job, her dedication to this village is just something you don't find anyplace else. The girls in the front office, you'll get the same response from them, whatever you need, Mayor, because they love this village. So I guess I want to leave you with a thought, and I think this is to the people who are coming on to this board.